All right, shall we, or do you want to wait a couple more minutes?
Nope, let's get going.
Okay, I will officially open tonight the Southampton Planning Board via Zoom. This is also being televised on East Hampton Media with the Computer Access TV. All members are present Cindy Palmer, Jim Labrie, Heath Locke, Paul Fergal, and myself, Paul Demon. Even though some of you may be signed in, see Ed Gibson's name, this is the town general Zoom account. That way there, we don't have to buy a separate one and pay for it monthly, so we're allowed to use this. The first item tonight is an A and R from James Labrie Jr. for 62 Gun Road. And at this time, I'm going to ask Jim Labrie, our member, to recuse himself while we discuss this A and R.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll mute myself out and then I'll sort of walk away a little bit. And you want to just text me when you want me back?
I will, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and representing Jim Labrie Jr. is Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. And I believe I sent everyone the copies of the application and the plan previously. And hopefully you all got that, yes?
Yep.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
I can also, I can also share the plan right here.
Perfect, that would be great.
So bear with me one second, there you go. So there's the A and R plan that we submitted for Jim Labrie Jr. And I can make it a little smaller here so that, maybe I can, if I'm smart enough. There we go. So.
Where did Keith go?
Oops, what's that?
Where did Keith go?
He's still here.
I don't have you on my screen.
You've got to adjust the windows of the users. What happens is when he shares a screen, it goes into a into an automatic video feed if they're speaking.
Gotcha.
So it should be on the right-hand side, or, well, I think that's where mine ends up being, where you see the faces. So the A and R plan that we have submitted shows parcel C, which has an area of 4.54 acres located on Gun Road currently in a bus other land that is owned by Jim Labrie Jr. and Kathleen on others, either side of the property. His intention is to build, Jim Labrie Jr.'s intention is to build a single-family house on that lot. And that we will be need, in need of filing for a stormwater permit for his house, although that permit will be forthcoming.
Mark, can you zoom in a little more? It's a little difficult to see what's going on here.
Sure. Yeah. Let me get rid of this for a second, can I? Well, I can put it over this side. Okay, so. So Gun Road. Currently, Jim Labrie Jr. lives in the old farmhouse, white farmhouse barn on this property here. New lot would have 175 feet of frontage along Gun Road. Kathleen Labrie owns a building lot, vacant building lot to the east of the new parcel C. And then Kathleen and Jim Labrie Senior's house is located further to the east. So it's a long parcel of land that goes all the way back to land that Jim Labrie Senior owns to the south. The width of the lot is 220 feet in the back. Standing all the way up. There's still 24 acres that they own to the west side of the property.
Any other questions from the board on the, the frontage, the dimensions, or anything of that nature?
I have none.
No.
None.
And according to what you told me, Mark, previously that you have to file this first, this A and R, before you can then submit a stormwater for the excavation in the building, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I can show you if the board wants a preliminary septic design that we're working on in relationship to the property, bear with me one second.
Does anybody want to see that at this point?
If people would like to see it.
Anybody want to see that now, or you want to wait?
Does it matter?
Not really, not relative to the A and R submission.
Then it doesn't matter for now.
Okay.
Now, Mark, you're also going to be looking for a street address on this?
So, yes. And that's why I wanted to call that up, Paul, one second, and I forget, it's what I looked at is based on the abutting parcels of land that already have street numbers to it. We would request, one second here. That this house be known as 62. 64 is to the west, I'm sorry, to the east. So we'd like to request 62. And Jim Labrie Jr.'s house is 60, the old farmhouse.
All right, so 62, is there any other information we need on this before someone makes a motion?
I don't believe so. I believe we have everything we need. I don't have any further comment.
I have a question. So you said at a later date, you're gonna, there's going to be a need to file a stormwater plan on this? Is that because of the size of the disturbance? Is that the expectation?
Yes, so, so the intent is to build the house further back on the lot.
Right.
So that we will, within the next few weeks, so that maybe, hopefully at your meeting in June, you can address the stormwater application.
So I happened to drive in by there a few times. It seems to me there was some forestry work going on up there on the upper end of that lot, and also there is a spare amount of change in the topography there. It's not a flat lot at all. It goes uphill. So, okay, good.
Any of that forestry excavation, though, Mark, was under the current chapter 61?
Correct.
So this has been just straight chapter 61, so.
The entire, yeah, and it's going to remain in 61?
Okay, so it's always been owned by Jim Labrie Jr.?
Yes. And it's going to stay in Jim Labrie Jr.'s name and Kathleen Labrie.
This lot is in both of their names? I thought that was the abutting lot.
No, the abutting lot is just Kathleen Labrie. This particular piece is both their names, and it's been their names since they purchased it. And it's going to remain in 61.
Okay.
We got all the information we need. Someone want to make a motion?
A motion to endorse and approve the A and R plan as presented for 62 Gun Road.
Second.
You have a motion that's made in seconded. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one. Thank you.
Are we going to sign off on these?
I'm going to come to that next, Cindy. Mark, you want to, you're going to hang on, or do you want to?
Yeah, no, I was going to hang on because I, I was going to give an update on, Jim was going to update the board on CPA.
Okay.
And I will do that. So I'll just mute myself and wait till you get to that point.
All right, now that we've dealt with that A and R, let me just get Jim back in here. We had discussed this a couple of years back by Larry Smith about, remember all the times we have to go through and sign, five of us, all the plans? And Larry asked, why don't you guys just designate one or two of you to sign plans going forward and notify the Registry of Deeds? So I guess this is about as good a time as any, not knowing how long this Zoom procedure will remain in place. So I would like to have someone entertain a motion that either myself and/or Paul Fergal, who is the Vice Chairman, sign A and R plans going forward. And according to what Larry told me, I just have to send this in the form of a letter to the Registry of Deeds, telling them that there's only going to be one or two signatures coming with A and Rs from this time forward.
So let me ask you a question. Why did we all sign it in the past?
Because it's been done that way for years, and it was, the format has never been changed. But Larry brought it to our attention that many towns have only one or two people sign them rather than the entire board. You vote on them at the same meeting, Cindy, and you approve them, but yet all the signatures are not required. Does anybody have a comment on that?
Paul, can I just throw something out there? I suggest that you just do it as a title, the Chair and the Vice Chair, and not put your name. So when that switches in the future, that won't become moved.
Well, yeah, I understand that, John. The only problem I have with it now, they don't know who the Chair and Vice Chair are. So I thought by giving the names, and then as the titles change, we will have to, you know, the, let the registry know that.
You could do by Chair and Vice Chair and put currently Chair is, Vice Chair is, and as that changes, that way you don't have to go back and take these votes again at your meetings.
True, true.
But just a thought, it's up to you.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering how that works with signatures on file, if they've got like names associated with them, how they're going to know, so.
And we've done that on the Select Board, and the current Chair or Vice Chair at the time were just able to sign different documents.
Very good.
All right, so I move that we agree that the Chair and Vice Chair can sign A and Rs in lieu of the entire board, or even a quorum, and that going forward, the, if the roles change, the Registry of Deeds be notified if the people who are serving in those roles will be so notified to the Registry of Deeds.
Second.
Who had that second? Keith?
I did, yep.
Okay, Keith, motion made in seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, I've got several building permits here that have been building up. And again, I sent you all copies of the plans. The first one I'll address is from Tom Backus of 81 Valley Road. In the total disturbance area, and Keith verified this with his software. They came in with about 39,300 of disturbance, but yet Keith verified 38,000, so everything looks to be in order there. Keith, if you want to make any other further comment?
No, I think you summarized it all. Measurements I took were 38,000, just submitted, so I feel confident that at least what's on paper falls under the 40,000 stormwater threshold.
Anybody else have any comments on those plans? Do I have a motion then to approve the building permit for Tom Backus 81 Valley Road?
Second, or actually, like, so moved.
Been a while.
So Paul made the motion and Keith second?
That's correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain on abutting property.
Thank you, Jim. The next one is Nick Mulvaney of 39 Pleasant Street. And that was well, not even close to any kind of disturbance that we're interested in. I sent copies of that as well. Anybody have any questions on that at 39 Pleasant? No questions, no comments on that one?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, who's second?
Second.
Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is Walter Merrick for 7 High Street. I believe this is the one that Janet was concerned with. And just to give Janet a little background, the A and R was approved on that lot back in 2016. So it's been a few years before they finally decided to build on that property. And the area of disturb, area of disturbance there is 17,081. So it's considerably considerably less than their stormwater triggers, so that's where that lies at this point. Do you have any comment you'd like to make, Janet?
I always wonder, I don't, I have my phone on now, so it's probably getting the feedback. But is it okay just to start working there without the building permit?
Well, I believe they can do work on the property. Is that correct, board members, that they can work on the property and do grubbing and whatever else without a building permit?
Paul, just from my experience, I had to get a grubbing permit from Randall Kemp in order to do grubbing up on my lot on High Street before I could do anything. And then before you really get into any more detail, you had to do a dig safe and the builder had to file a permit. That's what I was told by Randall.
Right.
Well, I understand that Randall will issue a driveway or driveway permit, not a grubbing. I don't think he handles that.
Yeah, I have a grubbing one. Matter of fact, it's close by here, but to grub that area where the driveway is and everything, Jim, not the whole property.
Right, right, the entrance, because we have the driveway bylaw that Randall handles the permitting for that.
Yeah, that's what he did, okay.
But those permits would be separate from this building permit, correct?
Correct, that, you know, driveway is on its own. Anybody can put a driveway in if it meets the criteria of the bylaw.
So how does one find out if those other permits have been obtained?
Dr. Randall.
Okay.
I would call Randall.
Other thing I was told, because of all the white poles there for the subject tank, there's four, I think now, that there is a reserve tank. Could a reserve tank be explained to me?
I can.
Board of Health?
Paul, I can answer your questions.
Go ahead, Mark.
Janet, it's Mark Reed again. Two-fold, one is, as you know, this property had to get a notice of intent and approved by the Conservation Commission. So before any work can get approved or started on the project, he has to install his erosion control barriers. So if you go out there, you'll see the, what's known as straw wattles for erosion control barriers. And then the Conservation Commission will hold a site visit to look at the property and see if it's all set in compliance with, with the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission. The site was dig safe. I was out there the other day, and the street is painted and dig safe has been there and marked all the utilities, including the town water for the project. So, and, and as far, you know, somebody has the right to clear or start the work, which he's done. He's put up, he's put up a snow fence in the area that he's not supposed to work in due to the river's front area in compliance with the permit from the Conservation Commission.
I've seen the orange fence, but what a, what a wattle.
So wattles are a form of erosion control barriers. And they're round in shape, and they're long. They look like a big, long snake.
Oh, I've seen those.
12 inches in diameter, and they're, they're located on the property now. If you go out there and look at it, Janet, from, from the higher section.
I won't go on their property. I can go on my property.
You can look down in there. As, as far as the white PVC pipes, those are the areas of the percolation tests and soil tests. A reserve area is if your septic system ever fails, you have to show on the site plan in your property that you can replace your existing septic system with a new one. So a reserve is if your septic system fails, there's an area reserved for future septic system.
Well, if the house plan is the same that was presented four years ago, it looks to me like that reserve tank will be underneath the house.
No, it won't be, Janet.
What?
If you look at the plan, it will not be.
Okay. It, it just looks kind of strange to me where those white poles are now. Okay, I've never heard of reserve tanks. Maybe that's something new.
For all intents and purposes, then, with this area disturbance, 17,081, it falls under the threshold that we're responsible for. Does anybody else have any questions about this permit?
Yeah, I, I just have some general questions. So it falls under the disturbance requirements. It doesn't need a special stormwater plan. But the Conservation, according to what Mark just said, the Conservation Commission will be coming in to sort of check at a later date. Because I, I saw there's quite, quite a change in grade between where, where this lot is and going onto Janet's land. So I'm just wondering if this is, you know, enough from the planning board to make sure that there isn't going to be a washout onto Janet's abutting land.
It's not our responsibility. I mean, our responsibility is to verify the, the limits of disturbance and understand that it doesn't exceed thresholds identified in our bylaws. So anything else is not our purview. It's not really our discussion.
Okay, just asking the question. I understood the answer.
No, there is, and on the building permit forms, Cindy, there's eight other departments that have to sign off, one of, one of which is Conservation. So if there's any of those issues that they would have to address, but as Paul stipulated, this is the only thing that we have to address.
If excavation, or when excavation starts, will hay bales be put between our two properties?
I can address that. The, the erosion control barriers are shown on the plan. The topography slopes to the rear of the house, which is the low area located on their property. Your property next door is, is at a higher elevation. So the wetlands and low area are actually this piece of property. Your, your field is, or your field is at a higher elevation that abuts it.
And the potash brook is protected?
Yes, yeah, with erosion control barriers.
And how long will erosion control barriers be there?
Until everything is stable, green grass is there, and the Conservation Commission gives their approval to be removed.
Approximately how long would that be?
I would anticipate maybe six or eight months.
After the house is built?
Yeah, from start to finish.
Okay.
In the project now, so hopefully by fall, the grass is established, and then we can ask for permission to remove the erosion control barriers.
Okay, and Mark, as you know, in the second meeting that we had on the first notice of intent, they're not supposed to use any kind of chemicals or anything on their yard, correct?
Correct, that's all part of the conservation.
Okay, this is, these are, these are not, it sounds like non-planning board discussions.
True, but Mark's the only one that knows the answers.
All right, Janet, we're going to move on.
Okay, I'm going to mute, mute myself again. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Bye.
Do I have a motion, or is there any other questions on the Merrick 7th High Street?
I have none.
Motion?
Motion to endorse.
Second?
Second.
Jim, Jim Labrie, you're still muted.
Oh, yeah, when the dogs were barking, I muted it.
Who, who seconded that?
Paul Fergal.
Well. All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one we have, and again, Keith had verified this one for Paul Trueheart, and it's for 62 East Street. And the disturbance area that Keith verified was 31,000 square feet. You want to comment anything on that, Keith?
Yeah, I mean, this one was pretty straightforward. There's driveway disturbance and obviously just a disturbance for normal lawn area, septic tank installation. The applicant's design engineer have that email in front of me, but I do recall the number that I came up with was, was close to what the applicant's I I do recall the number that I came up with was was close to uh what the applicant's design engineer had had submitted as well. So to me, it was clearly under the forty thousand square foot threshold. Uh, I don't have any further comments or questions on this application.
Anyone else have any questions on it that muted?
Nope.
What was the disturbance, Keith?
Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand. Yep. Uh, there's no other comment. I'll make a motion to endorse the plan.
Second.
Motion's been made in the second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's it for building permits.
Paul, um, at this point, if we don't hold Mark up too long, um, I would just like to give a quick update on the community preservation.
All right, let me take that out of order then, and I'll put you up front on that so Mark can dismiss himself. So go ahead, Jim.
Okay, uh, the community preservation met via Zoom uh last week. And um the park commission brought forward, they want to build two pickleball courts and Mark can put up a schematic or a drawing of it, if if you're able to do that. And they're adjacent to the basketball court, and this is phase one, they called it, and it's the first two pickleball courts. Um, the committee approved to bring it to town meeting. Um, the value, uh, I think they approved was a hundred and fifteen thousand to do the work, the site work and then build the courts. Um, again, this is phase one and it will be going to town meeting. I just wanted to bring this to the board. Share that with them.
So this is near the tennis courts uh behind the library in Conant Park?
Correct, that is correct. And it's right adjacent. You can see it's adjacent to the um basketball court.
Cindy, yeah, Cindy, that wearing my park commission hat, um, the pavilion is down here where my pointer is here.
Oh, okay.
The little, the little new play lot that was donated by the church is located here. Parking lot here and further off the plan is the library. Existing basketball courts are here and two tennis courts. So what is being proposed in um is two new pickleball courts be constructed. They're outlined in green and the in the blue.
I noticed Jim emphasized phase one. Is there going to be a phase two?
It looks like there is. I see that note about eliminating the basketball courts.
So we've had some discussions um with the council on aging and the school, North School people. Uh, they were hoping that um they could get four pickleball courts. Um, because of the funding, uh, we had to downsize the project to two pickleball courts. Um, so one option is in the future, potentially putting two new pickleball courts where the existing tennis courts are and building a new tennis court, potentially at Labrie Field.
You mean basketball court, Mark?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, basketball courts, sorry. Yeah, so build a new basketball court at Labrie Field. And so which would be here would be four down the road if it worked out, four pickleball courts and two tennis courts. But for right now, uh, the the existing basketball courts are going to remain. The two tennis courts would be the remaining. And then the two pickleball courts. One of the, one of the tennis courts is got temporary lines on the court so that currently they play pickleball on this tennis court here um until these are built.
So I have a question about, um, has somebody assessed utilization of, say, the basketball court and the current tennis courts? And um, I'm specifically looking at the basketball courts. Um, do do a lot of people go down and play basketball or shoot hoop or whatever down there?
Yeah, we we have this. There is a group of, or, you know, I we never counted, Cindy, the amount of young people that use it. Um, but we we do use it. Actually, during this COVID nineteen, we had to block off the basketball courts because uh groups of kids were down there playing basketball. Um, so we had to block off the the uh basketball court. Courts do get used, um, probably not as much as they used to when there, when there was a larger group of people playing tennis used. So that's why the park commission was cognizant on trying to not eliminate the tennis courts and utilize those um so that people that like tennis can play tennis, people can play pickleball.
And and another question?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, another question. Um, so I went to the Celebrate Southampton event last year, last August. We're crossing our fingers that something like that can happen this year, but, you know, I'm looking at the specific area of the proposed new pickleball courts and um it was being utilized. I think my bottom line question here is, are we removing some of the open space there that could be used for other things? And why are we putting the pickleball courts there and not maybe on the other side of the of the um current tennis courts? Was that brought up as a question of?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. Well, we had a lot of different discussion on that. Um, twofold. This is really the only area that makes um any practical sense to put the new pickleball courts. Yes, it does take away a little bit of room from this open space um that potentially at large gatherings can be used. We did look at trying to put it on the other side here, and there's not physical room uh to put them here because we have the pond and wetlands located on the other side of the tennis courts. So if you envision, you know, this square going over here, there's just not enough room. Um, really at the tree line, the the topography drops down into the wetland associated with the pond. Um, so this is the really, this is the only area that would fit. Uh, and keeping all the tennis pickleball court activity together in one location, which was a a um big request from the Council of Aging. Um, they have anywhere from twenty-five plus people that play pickleball on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Um, it's the newest um sporting event.
Yes, guess I guess I better get in tune with the the times here.
Yeah, right. Uh huh. East Hampton's building two of them through CPA Monday. Westfield built, uh, I believe, four to six of them. They took old tennis courts in Westfield uh and put pickleball on their, I'm I'm sorry, not not tennis courts, basketball courts. Um, pickleball courts on, so.
Hey, hey, Mark, it's John. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I I often walk through there with the family and I I know as the kids were growing up, a lot of families went there. Couple played tennis, couple played basketball because the boys were playing basketball. So while having all those three sports there seems like you get families to go there and use them. Uh, has any thought been given to take two of the pickleball courts and put them in Labrie Field so you can space them around town so more people will have access?
Well, I guess that's an option, John, for in the future. The the problem is discussion with the Council of Aging uh and school, North School people, is when they do have a function of pickleball um, they would prefer to have the pickleball in one location instead of separated.
I I I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be picking on the older folks, kind of one of them, but it seems like basketball's been here for a while, as we know, and and tennis. So if we're gonna take a popular sport and take it out because one group of a new sport wants more, that that doesn't seem to be helping the whole town.
Yeah, we're not taking out the, under this phase.
Right.
In phase one.
Yeah.
The basketball court is staying in place. The two tennis courts are staying in place.
I understand. It's just that that thought process is getting rid of basketball, which at least from what I've seen, being up the road has been real popular over the years.
Yep. And if that's the case in the future, um, then maybe that's all we have is two pickleball courts.
Okay.
Mark, one thing that I find very odd about this this park, it it doesn't have great access. I mean, you you're walking through a drainage ditch or a swale to get to the basketball or to the future pickleball court. It's it's a very roundabout, not really inviting um access to get to any of those um courts that are being proposed. Did you consider adding a pathway? You know, gravel or 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 pervious pavement to connect them because to me, they seem isolated and not very friendly to get to um in terms of where they're situated.
Um, well, the current access is is grass over an earthen burn dam to the pond. Well, so here's the pond. This is the an earthen burn dam that was constructed years and years ago.
But if you're parking back, if you're parking at the parking lot to to the to the right there.
Yeah.
I mean, it it seems like, you know, you don't really have a street. It it's not very inviting.
Yep. Well, there is, there is a gravel to the pavilion. We've had talking about trying to uh access. That's one of the comments from the um older people that play pickleball. Um, that's another reason they didn't like it on the other side of the tennis courts because it was too far for them to go. Is to get some type of pathway, yes. But it all, hopefully, our budget will warrant that.
I have another question. Um, because uh are, actually, my husband and I rented Conant Pavilion a couple of years ago for a private retirement party. You had to go through all these hoops to just get access to the restrooms. You know, you have to get the, you know, the key from the police department and all that stuff. So in terms of the type of people and the generation, and I'm part of it, by the way, to who might be playing pickleball, um, are the restrooms going to still be locked? Um, or is that like, I know that's not part of what you're proposing tonight, but I'm just a general question.
Sure. Um, down the road, um, we're gonna try to make it available so that the restrooms could be open. Um, but we have had problems with just leaving the restrooms open.
Right.
For hours a day.
Yeah.
Vandalism. So uh unfortunately, there's no good answer there, you know?
Yeah.
We don't have a park, we don't have, we don't have a park ranger or somebody over it.
Well, some communities, uh, not to hijack the discussion, they have um, they have cameras, right? And, you know, I know other communities, you can do a CCTV maybe to like the police department's uh uh dispatch where they can buzz them in. I mean, technology's there. Uh, I mean, that's a, that's a way to keep this place secure and yet allow access into into the site. And frankly, you might not even need uh need to worry about security once you put a camera up because that's that's a significant deterrent in itself. Yeah.
Yeah, it's not what you're asking tonight. I just want to say I'm in support of these pickleball courts. I think it's a great idea. It it is kind of a hot thing these days and it's it is mostly people over the age of sixty, sixty-five, but not entirely. I know young people have been playing it too, so I think it's great. I support it.
All right, anything else on that, Jim? No?
No, that's it. I just wanted to bring that to the board. That that was the discussion we had last week.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
And I'll sign off. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Mark.
Next, we have Cindy has a report on the MS four stormwater ongoing plans from PB PC. Go ahead, Cindy.
Well, my report's pretty brief. I forwarded to you the draft. I hope you all had a chance to see that, John. I don't think you got it, but um, and if you want to see it, I'll forward it to you. Uh, it's been a a regular meeting approximately monthly since since February, I think. Uh, Patty Gamborini from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has been leading us through the process of reviewing and drafting a new bylaw consistent with the requirements of the federal and the state. And um, in addition to that, the regulations that would accompany that, Paul Fergal was part of one of the meetings and that was really helpful. Um, and it's still draft. It's gonna go on. Uh, the last I heard from Patty, she is is not part of the process after June. And the hope was to complete the drafting part of it. It will have to go to town meeting for final approval. Um, but for a whole myriad of reasons, uh, I don't think we're gonna do the best we can to get through June. I think after that, it goes to the planning board for review. So you're gonna get to see it at that point. Um, I forwarded to you because uh, no surprise to anybody, I'm not very expert in this, and I really am appreciative of any input as to what you see in the drafts. I will bring it back to the committee. Uh, that's pretty much my report.
Paul, any comment from you on that?
No, and what I've, like, I guess I do have a comment. Um, from what I did see, it seems like it's in line with what other communities are doing. And I had some concerns about some particular language and make sure we covered it. And uh clarity, I think, is more um important uh going forward when communities draft these uh new bylaws, particularly with um what's required of municipalities' developments and of various projects. And I think from what has been prepared, I think we're headed in the right direction with what we ask of um developers, the town, particularly the town. Because, you know, one of the concepts that I, you know, I have is, you know, we don't want to be painting ourselves into a corner with certain regulations that uh might be onerous to the town, which, you know, don't really make a whole lot of sense uh in terms of moving forward, you know, if you want to do a sidewalk project, are you going to be replacing, you know, whatever? You, it's gonna be outside of the scope of the project. And we want to basically keep the um intent of the project in in line with with funding and with what is um what is feasible. And also, the one component that I do want to talk about is there is language there that discusses the planning board's um ability to waive certain regulations that are identified if we uh team team itself. So um, there is some wiggle room uh based on the planning board's authority uh going forward, so.
I want to thank Cindy and Paul. Paul was in on one meeting, but Cindy's been it from the get-go. And if you'll recall, we appointed her as the liaison on our behalf because the times of the meetings were during our workdays. And it's no secret that there's a lot of technical information there that she doesn't understand. There's a ton of technical information there that I don't understand. I understand what the bylaw tends to do and what it it's uh meat and potatoes are. But when it gets down to technicalities and the time spent that um both Cindy in particular, if if the state is going to mandate and have requirements, then then write them up. You know, Larry Smith years ago, when we were brought bylaw changes, gave us a draft. He didn't ask us to sit in on eight or ten hours worth of meetings and then come to us with a final draft. He came with a draft and then we went over it. And then we picked out the areas where we needed the verbiage changed. But if the if the main part of it is all what the state requires and is mandated, then why argue with it? But to spend all this time is is unbelievable. So But to spend all this time is, is unbelievable, so as far as I'm concerned, I was asked to uh. Uh, sit in on these and I refused because. You send me the final document, and then we're gonna sit down and maybe two or three hours, one meeting, have to go over it paragraph by paragraph. Again.
There's a, there's a lot of language in there, Paul, that is, you know, related to what Randall does. From highway superintendent standpoint, as well as conservation, conservation's also involved with it, and other town officials are, are also in it as well. So there's a lot of overlap with respect to what um. What has, has, has been dictated by other commissions as well as departments within the town. That require their input, so, so I kinda see why I did it in that manner, because trying to get everybody to be on the same page, I think. You know, makes it um, a little easier uh, in that concept, but I, I, I do agree, seeing the final draft is, is very beneficial for us to. To, to review and um, look at, but in, in terms of the procedure they, they went through. I, I think it was important for us to get some feedback from Randall, particularly Randall, as well as, you know, the Conservation Commission as well, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that they. Uh, have interest in that tend to overlap with what we do, but anyway, I'm done talking.
Okay, well, let me just.
From where I sit, it's gonna take a photo, this thing goes through, and how many pages it is compared to our, our um, current one. You're gonna take a Philadelphia lawyer to figure it out, but the most glaring thing that I think this board needs to consider is that. Yes, we are the, the permit granting authority, but if you go down on some of those uh. Paragraphs toward the end, they want us to be the monitoring authority, and you know what, we're not on the payroll for that. And that's, that's my biggest concern with that issue, is we can grant the permit, fine. But if you expect this board, a volunteer board, to manage it and then keep track of inspections and all this other stuff, I'm sorry. I, I didn't sign up for that.
Okay, so just, as my final note is, if, if any of you who have a lot more expertise in reading these. And enforce, enforcing or just, you know, making it palatable for anybody, the town or a developer or anybody. You just kinda look at it, and if you see something really glaring that should go into the, the process aspect of it prior to the final draft. Please let me know, and if you don't have time to do it, that's absolutely fine, um, because I'm just out of the water in this whole thing. The next meeting, I think, what did I tell you, Paul, is that next Wednesday? At, uh, hold on. Yeah, this coming a week from today at noon, it's a Zoom meeting. Back, we're back to technical stuff, Paul Fergal, so if you're able to make it, that'd be great. And we'll just go the best we can, and it will, you'll get the final draft when it's done.
Thanks for your patience, Cindy.
Oh, you think I'm patient, Paul? Oh, I'm sorry, don't let that go. I'm just acting very diplomatically.
You're, uh, you're, uh, you're hanging in there on those meetings.
Logic, don't let her fool you.
All I have is a report uh, from John Furman. A week ago or ten days ago now, we had a teleconference with Water Highway. Myself, Jim was in on it. Uh, John and the people of Gill Farm because of uh, some issues that John had up there, which you had. Received the letter on a couple of weeks back about stuff that he addressed, and going forward with the uh, construction. And then today, I emailed you over another update, um, he met with the contractor last week. And they encountered a clay layer in the bottom of the detention basin, so I guess uh, they had an engineer come in. Trying to paraphrase here, and they're gonna have to dig out about four feet of that. And re, redesign that. And also, the water line, the actual water line evidently was not included on the uh. The plan to interconnect both Fitch Farm and Gill Farm, so we had the. Engineer uh, come in, show that, and uh, he's been on top of it, and I thank John, he's been very astute and very uh. Very well uh, on top of this thing for us, and I can't thank him enough. Because otherwise, it would have been a real mess out there. Any other reports or committees?
Paul, um, I'm not sure if you're prepared to at this time, but you. I've seen a lot of in the, in the last month and a half from Heather Pellegrini about five G, and I didn't really. Know a whole lot about that, and you were gonna read something?
I have two, two letters, um, we haven't, we haven't met. Since Heather sent those over, so there was two different, uh, two different. Letters that Heather wrote, now read them into the minutes right now into communications. Heather was writing over her concerns about the five G's, uh, small cell tower installations. And what if anything our town leaders can do to mitigate any potential harmful health effects while ensuring. Remain on par with other communities with respect to regulatory bylaws and potential income opportunities. I don't have much knowledge on the subject, but I have found a very informative study which I have attached to this email. And I was hoping to present this at an upcoming meeting, but currently my schedule doesn't permit my attendance. Considering the rapidity with which five G is being deployed, and to my knowledge, no current discussion among our boards on the matter. Feel compelled to bring it to your attention, please review the attached, particularly what other mass towns are doing, and let me know what you think. She also copied the Board of Health and the Town Administrator on it. Also, Heather sent a letter about the uh, Master Plan Implementation Committee, of which Cindy and I had a joint meeting back. Some time ago with the Select Board. In her comments, I'm writing to express my concern over a proposed strategy. Set forth by the Master Plan Committee, which suggests increasing the minimum required lot size on a residential rural. From one and a half to two acres, the absence of updating minimum lot size requirements uniformly across all residential zones. Such an action would be deemed stop zoning. Such practices serve to discriminate and segregate based on socioeconomic factors and defeat the goal of making housing more affordable. This action would effectively impose a price floor for the cost of housing, making it impossible for people who live below a certain means to afford them. Secondly, to single out one group of landowners and decrease the value of their property in such a selective, inequitable, and injurious manner. Would create a grievance for those affected. Unless the recommendation is to unilaterally rezone our residential districts in a fair and impartial way. This action would be completely unjust, thank you for your time and consideration.
Could I comment?
Yes.
On that, um. I, first of all, I absolutely appreciate that a town resident is aware of the. Kinds of things that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is faced with and. And thank you, Ms. Pellegrini, if you're listening, because we, we do appreciate it, on that note. The process right now is to consider ways to engage the public. On where we're going with the whole master plan implementation process, so we're gonna be looking for more and more input from the public. The second thing is that there's nothing that's been um, put forth. On the implementation process that wasn't already in the original master plan. So I think what, I think she's referring to is the presentation to the Select Board, I think, November of last year, when um. The goals and the, um, sort of the prioritization was put forth by the, then, by the Chair, Mike Rosenberg. And she, she recalled that, but that was already in the original master plan, so it's not new. And thirdly, any kind of zoning change would have to go before um, town meeting anyway, so once again. It's an opportunity to comment, and, I mean, we're not talking about a zoning change without that approval, so. That's, that's my comment in the three comments in general.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other business before I go on to the only warrant I have on the agenda tonight? Hearing none, there's a warrant I wanna process for compliment and page, there was two of them, one was for seventy-six dollars and one was. And it was uh. Opinion on the marijuana facility that wanted to be built on College Highway there in the Village Zone. Which was not even close to being acceptable, and then the others were emails and uh. Reviews of the Gill Farm documents, so a total of three hundred and eighty dollars. To compliment and page, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to accept the warrants.
Second.
Third.
Motion made, second, all in favor? Thank you. Other than that, any other business, cuz I have nothing else on that, the agenda. Larry Smith, by the way, I just will say this, I, he, he did get back from Mexico, he was lucky. Had a little trouble getting out of there, I guess, but he did get back, and. I think I sent you uh, his email, that going forward with A and R's, you know, we, we could. Put all this off until such time as we meet in person again. But this wasn't too difficult tonight, I didn't think, but as far as hearings are concerned. Um, I'd be reluctant to, because the, the people that wanna open up a marijuana. Shop at the Red Rock. Are just waiting in the wings to come before us, but um, I think, given all the public input that we'd have, it'd be. Pretty difficult to do it in a format like this, um, I don't know what the rest of you would think, but. Hopefully, this, we can get back together sooner than later with social distancing somehow in a uh, in a uh. The boardroom.
I think maybe case by case, depending in uh, what we have before us, if you. Bring it up at a Zoom meeting, and we can decide what we wanna do with it, I guess, right?
Yeah.
And for, and for everybody's sake, Jim has gotta stay with us and. Jim, Jim was supposed to be gone in May, um, but I, I understand you have to stay with us until such time as uh.
Yeah, I called Ed and I asked him, and he said, until I'm replaced at the town meeting, at the town elections, I guess, so. Hang in there, I'll go ten years plus.
I, I think we postponed the elections another year, Jim, I'm not sure, but. Take all the time you need.
The good news, Jim, is that the pickleball courts are not too far from Town Hall, so.
Pretty great, hey, I, I may give that a shot. I'll challenge, uh, challenge all you guys.
I think you're the only guy we could beat, Jim, come on. Well, hearing, uh, hearing, um, no other comments or.
Well, I, I'm just gonna make a general comment, um, I, I think this whole Zoom thing. Is not as hard as everybody kinda worries about, you know, it's true, you do it a little bit, you get. Used to it, and I personally discovered that my, what is it, bandwidth wasn't. Wasn't wide enough to accommodate the Zoom meetings I was doing, so I had to get a brand new router this week, I know this is not public. Uh, this is not a planning board business, but uh, some of the issues that I've heard people have. Is that they get, you know, bumped out of Zoom, and it's, it's possibly related to that, I don't know, but so far, we got a new router, and it made a big difference, here we are.
One of the challenges, one of the, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
One of the challenges I, I, I do see across the board is the, is, is, is people um, not having. The ability to configure their laptops with their cell phones, and kinda like what Janet was going through, and I've seen it on a professional basis. As well, where some people, you know, there's some steps you gotta go through to, you know, change the direction of your. Drivers or, or the way that it's, you know. Working in your computer versus your iPhone, but um, that is gonna be a significant challenge, I think, particularly if there's. You know, forty people that are logged on, I, I would think there's more likelihood we'll see more participat- part- participation. On Zoom than in regular meetings, because it's easy for someone to log on rather than, you know, get out of their PJs and head over to Town Hall, you know. So, you know, that's gonna be an issue, I think, you know, going forward, is being able to not only. Hear people speak, but also the concept of controlling. The discussion, because, you know, I, I think that's something we need to have a firm understanding is, can we mute? Or we have that, we have that, we should have that control from uh, the administrator side to be able to mute. The public, uh, in terms of uh, when it's board discussion, you know, we keep it open to the board members, so we don't have. Interruptions and a, a lot of disruption that, that, that would be. Unwarranted at that particular time, so I, I think that's something that we, we should, and I'm not sure how the Select Board's handling that, that aspect, but. That's something to consider.
I mean, Paul, uh, Paul can do a, a universal mute on his end, maybe Ed didn't show him how to do that. We've done that at the board meetings, and also, we've talked about partial Zoom and in-person, because a lot of times. If you're somewhere, you can't make it to a meeting, now you can zoom in and be there. At the actual, you don't have to be at the actual live meeting, so I think in the future, we're gonna have kind of a composite of these things to work from, so get more involvement.
Be good.
Um, I've got someone, is this Janet again?
Yes, yes, I just had a question, but whenever I might, can I come back in?
Go, what do you got, Janet?
Uh, I just happened to notice on the street SWD, which I think is stormwater drainage. Um, which, does that mean they're gonna be putting a catch basin in front of that house?
Stormwater drain?
SWD.
Maybe it's a dick safe, maybe you're talking about dick safe, maybe you saw somebody call out a dick safe, could you, usually if, if they're digging. Yeah, I mean, that's probably, that's a routine activity that's done to call out existing, you know.
So they're gonna be putting a, a storm drain there in front of their house?
No, 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 who knows what it is, it could be existing, you, likelihood it's existing.
Check with Randall, check with Randall on that, Janet.
Okay, the reason I ask is two houses up, they put a drain at the end of their driveway, and the. Highway Department Superintendent at the time made that drain empty out into our field across the street without our knowledge or permission. So the, all the runoff from that person's driveway goes into our field, and I just wanna make sure. If they're putting a drain in front of this house, cuz there's horrific drainage uh, problems from high street. That it's not going to empty out into our field, so you tell me, I need to talk to Randall?
Yeah, double check with him on that.
Okay, thank you for letting me get back in. I won't bother you again.
Whatever you did, whatever you did on your second call in, there's no echo, so uh.
Isn't that funny? I know it, I know, I can, I can't hear me back either, thank you, maybe I'm getting better. Thank you, good night.
If no one has any other business, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you for bearing with me, my first time doing a meeting, I've been with some family stuff, so maybe we'll be better the next time, thanks, John, for your.
Good job.
Good night, everybody, everyone.